Welcome everyone to the November 21 city council work session. We are first going to go into executive session pursuant to ORS 1926602E. Representative of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the public are not permitted to attend. We'll try to be quick. You'll tell me when we're ready?
You're good now.
We're good now? Okay.
I was Alan in my first goal setting session in January of '07. Wow.
You're newbie into the conversation.
I'll refrain from comment at this time.
And it was before that, actually.
Yeah, no, forever, forever, huh?
You're back in now.
Okay, we're back in. So welcome back everyone to our work session, City Manager.
I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Turn it back over to Sarah. All right, so tonight what we had hoped to do was have a really kind of long thorough meeting about your options and decisions ahead of you about City Hall. What we had anticipated would happen and what we had planned on happening was that we would have all of our information back from the consultants on the three scenarios. You would have had a JEO. We had thought initially we might have a legal determination on the Butterfly Lot. And then we had some kind of late information coming in about E-Web as a potential fourth scenario for you to look at. So our intent was that we would take all of that information and kind of hash through it tonight in a really long session until you could get to a preferred scenario or scenarios. As you know, not all of those things happened. And so what we want to do tonight is still have a really good conversation about City Hall and some of the scenarios. We want to walk through, we want to walk through some of the decision making you're going to make, some of the meeting timelines. We want to do a just kind of high level overview of all the scenarios and some of the things that we're learning. And then we really need you to have kind of a focused discussion on three main areas. And I have them up here. The first one that we'll ask you to talk about is around the rebid timeline and how you want to proceed with that for Phase One and its current location. We want to talk a little bit about the project values that we want to incorporate into the E-Web analysis. And then we want to talk about Phase Two and considerations that you may or may want more or less information on. And then I put down here a fourth kind of item that has nothing to do except with the timing of City Hall and the meetings. And that is if you have time at the end of the meeting, there's been a couple of things that have kind of been emerging issues that we need to resolve on your calendar. One of them has to do with recreational marijuana and whether you want to do some time place manner restrictions. And Glenn can kind of give you an overview of if you want to do that, what we would need to do and when. And then the second was that you received a request from the CSN around delaying the December 14 South Willamette work session. And so we have some time on the end to talk about that because as you'll see, as I go through the timeline, it may really relate to whether, how you make this kind of decision on City Hall. So on the left-hand side, we have today, so I'm kind of, we're showing, Kristi and I are going to co-present this, we're showing kind of your individual work sessions. So tonight we have two different work sessions. They're all on City Hall scenarios. We'll be coming back on the fifth. We're just kind of locking in the JEO meeting that'll be at 5:30 to talk about the coordinated development scenarios of A, B, and C. And then we're considering, and our intent will be to add a seven o'clock meeting item that same night. I know that's a long night for you guys to jump into the E-Web piece and really go into detail on that. That's an option. If we can't do it that night, we'll need to find another night. We were just thinking that could be an option to get all of it in one setting. Then the ones that are kind of in gray are not scheduled yet, but there is 12:12, there's a possibility that if you need more information or if we need to move that E-Web session, we could look for a way to fit that in either to your 5:30 or seven o'clock time. And then 12:14, if you take action, if somebody introduces a motion, we have one. I didn't think you'd do it tonight because you usually like to give each other advance notice. But if you wanted to move to postpone the South Willamette discussion to January, we could use that last 12:14 session to kind of lock in on a preferred scenario. Or preferred scenarios for us to move forward with. So that's kind of the, and somewhere in there, our hope is that someplace in there between 12:05 hopefully and 12:12, we'll get a ruling on the legal restrictions of the Butterfly Lot.
Is this enough information for you?
Do you know which one of these buttons is the pointer so when I get to that point, I don't have to turn around? Okay. I was afraid that would turn it off. All right. So tonight, the first thing we're going to do is walk through at a really high level the four scenarios. And even though there's four scenarios, they're really focused on these three sites. This is why I wanted the pointer. So as you know, we're talking about a scenario that shows us in two different ways at the existing City Hall site. We have a scenario that shows us at the Butterfly Lot site. And then we have a scenario of the E-Web site. And as you know, as we've been talking about these, and this has been considered kind of the heart or the core of downtown, the historic center. Others will talk about this being, the river being kind of the heart of the community. So the reason that we have those lines out there is as we were talking about parking scenarios, we talked about everything being within a quarter mile, being a reasonable distance that people would walk. So we've been kind of evaluating all of these sites on that, on that radius. So the first scenario is a little bit of what I would call our modified as-is scenario. So as you recall, your, as we were going out to bid, we had City Hall Phase One in this current location as we're shown here. And we had Phase Two showing as just a quarter block behind that Phase One because we had, you had modified the plan to allow for a courthouse on the second half of your block. As we learned and as you know, we discovered that the courthouse probably had more needs than that space would allow. And so as-as scenario really is to show, if we go forward with our land and they go forward with their land, what are possible? And as we've learned from this, that what we've learned is possible is totally feasible and pretty certain that we can build Phase One on our site. It's completely feasible and there's certainty that you own that site and you could do a Phase Two when the funds were available. What we also know is certain here is that if the courthouse builds on the Butterfly Lot, that probably means that the farmer's market won't stay in the heart of downtown. And that's, that's been, they've said all along, this is not their preferred scenario. So we feel like it's something that we're really starting to learn about this scenario. And the second scenario is our shared City Hall and courthouse site. When we shifted from the half block to three quarters of a block, it helps some in the scaling as it shows, it's feasible to do a Phase One City Hall on that site in the current location. It's feasible to put a courthouse there, step back from the building a little bit. And what we're showing, what we're learning is that it's also technically, physically feasible to put the Phase Hall, Phase Two services that you've identified, which is municipal court, planning and development, public works, you know, HR, information services, all of the 135,000 square feet are actually technically and feasibly able to be put here. And what we know about this scenario is that it starts to reopen up that fourth park block, keeping a legacy location for the farmer's market and also creates future development opportunities for whatever. We didn't identify what that use was. And then the scenario C that we've been looking at, similarly, it's physically possible to locate a Phase One City Hall in the north end of the park block. And as you recall, when we started looking at what we would do with Phase Two, some of our early learnings, and you'll, we'll hear more about this in the JEO meeting, was that it was looking like it would be more expensive to renovate a Phase Two City Hall or renovate the courthouse building and it still wouldn't accommodate all of the uses. And so what we're, we've been working towards is could we physically put the 135,000 square feet there? And it's, we're learning it's technically feasible to do that. In this scenario, it also provides a lot more flexibility for the courthouse because they would have a full block to help with their multiple services. So then we're going to make a shift over to E-Web, and this is something you haven't really heard a lot about yet. But as we looked at this,
I was Alan in my first bull setting session in January of '07. The goals.
Wow.
You're newbie into the conversation.
I'll refrain from comment at this time.
Yeah, and it was before that, actually.
Yeah, no, forever, forever.
You're back in now.
Okay, we're back in. So, welcome back, everyone, to our work session, City Manager.
I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Turn it back over to Sarah. All right, so, tonight, what we had hoped to do was have a really kind of long, thorough meeting about your options and decisions ahead of you about City Hall. What we had anticipated would happen, and what we had planned on happening was that we would have all of our information back from the consultants on the three scenarios. You would've had a JEO. We had thought initially we might have a legal determination on the Butterfly Lot. And then we had some kind of late information coming in about E-Web as a potential fourth scenario for you to look at. So, our intent was that we would take all of that information and kind of hash through it tonight in a really long session until you could get to a preferred scenario or scenarios. As you know, not all of those things happened, and so what we want to do tonight is still have a really good conversation about City Hall and some of the scenarios. We want to walk through, we want to walk through some of the decision-making you're going to make, some of the meeting timelines. We want to do a just kind of high-level overview of all the scenarios and some of the things that we're learning. And then we really need you to have kind of a focused discussion on three main areas. And I have them up here. The first one that we'll ask you to talk about is around the rebid timeline and how you want to proceed with that for Phase One and its current location. We want to talk a little bit about the project values that we want to incorporate into the E-Web analysis. And then we want to talk about Phase Two and considerations that you may or may want more or less information on. And then I put down here a fourth kind of item that has nothing to do except with the timing of City Hall and the meetings. And that is, if you have time at the end of the meeting, there's been a couple of things that have kind of been emerging issues that we need to resolve on your calendar. One of them has to do with recreational marijuana and whether you want to do some time, place, manner restrictions. And Glenn can kind of give you an overview of if you want to do that, what we would need to do and when. And then the second was that you received a request from the CSN around delaying the December 14th South Willamette work session. And so, we have some time on the end to talk about that because, as you'll see, as I go through the timeline, it may really relate to whether, how you make this kind of decision on City Hall. So, on the left-hand side, we have today, so I'm kind of, we're showing, Kristi and I are going to co-present this, we're showing kind of your individual work sessions. So, tonight, we have two different work sessions. They're all on City Hall scenarios. We'll be coming back on the fifth. We're just kind of locking in the JEO meeting that'll be at 5:30 to talk about the coordinated development scenarios of A, B, and C. And then we're considering, and our intent will be to add a 7:00 meeting item that same night. I know that's a long night for you guys to jump into the E-Web piece and really go into detail on that. That's an option. If we can't do it that night, we'll need to find another night. We were just thinking that could be an option to get all of it in one setting. Then, the ones that are kind of in gray are not scheduled yet, but there is 12:12. There's a possibility that if you need more information, or if we need to move that E-Web session, we could look for a way to fit that in either to your 5:30 or 7:00 time. And then 12:14, if you take action, if somebody introduces a motion, we have one. I didn't think you'd do it tonight because you usually like to give each other advance notice, but if you wanted to move to postpone the South Willamette discussion to January, we could use that last 12:14 session to kind of lock in on a preferred scenario. Or preferred scenarios for us to move forward with. So, that's kind of the, and somewhere in there, our hope is that someplace in there between 12:05, hopefully, and 12:12, we'll get a ruling on the legal restrictions of the Butterfly Lot.
Is this enough information for you?
Do you know which one of these buttons is the pointer, so when I get to that point, I don't have to turn around? Okay. I was afraid that would turn it off. All right. So, tonight, the first thing we're going to do is walk through at a really high level the four scenarios. And even though there's four scenarios, they're really focused on these three sites. This is why I wanted the pointer. So, as you know, we're talking about a scenario that shows us in two different ways at the existing City Hall site. We have a scenario that shows us at the Butterfly Lot site. And then we have a scenario of the E-Web site. And as you know, as we've been talking about these, and this has been considered kind of the heart or the core of downtown, the historic center. Others will talk about this being, the river being kind of the heart of the community. So, the reason that we have those lines out there is as we were talking about parking scenarios, we talked about everything being within a quarter mile, being a reasonable distance that people would walk. So, we've been kind of evaluating all of these sites on that, on that radius. So, the first scenario is a little bit of what I would call our modified-as-is scenario. So, as you recall, your, as we were going out to bid, we had City Hall Phase One in this current location, as we're shown here. And we had Phase Two showing as just a quarter block behind that Phase One because we had, you had modified the plan to allow for a courthouse on the second half of your block. As we learned, and as you know, we discovered that the courthouse probably had more needs than that space would allow. And so, as is scenario really is to show, if we go forward with our land and they go forward with their land, what are possible? And as we've learned from this, that what we've learned is possible is totally feasible and pretty certain that we can build Phase One on our site. It's completely feasible, and there's certainty that you own that site, and you could do a Phase Two when the funds were available. What we also know is certain here is that if the courthouse builds on the Butterfly Lot, that probably means that the farmer's market won't stay in the heart of downtown. And that's, that's been, they've said all along, this is not their preferred scenario. So, we feel like it's something that we're really starting to learn about this scenario. The second scenario is our shared City Hall and courthouse site. When we shifted from the half-block to three-quarters of a block, it helps some in the scaling as it shows, it's feasible to do a Phase One City Hall on that site in the current location. It's feasible to put a courthouse there, step back from the building a little bit. And what we're showing, what we're learning is that it's also technically, physically feasible to put the Phase Hall, Phase Two services that you've identified, which is municipal court, planning and development, public works, you know, HR, information services, all of the 135,000 square feet are actually technically and feasibly able to be put here. And what we know about this scenario is that it starts to reopen up that fourth park block, keeping a legacy location for the farmer's market, and also creates future development opportunities for whatever. We didn't identify what that use was. And then the scenario C that we've been looking at, similarly, it's physically possible to locate a Phase One City Hall on the north end of the park block. And as you recall, when we started looking at what we would do with Phase Two, some of our early learnings, and you'll, we'll hear more about this in the JEO meeting, was that it was looking like it would be more expensive to renovate a Phase Two City Hall or renovate the courthouse building, and it still wouldn't accommodate all of the uses. And so, what we're, we've been working towards is, could we physically put the 135,000 square feet there? And it's, we're learning it's technically feasible to do that. In this scenario, it also provides a lot more flexibility for the courthouse because they would have a full block to help with their multiple services. So, then we're going to make a shift over to E-Web, and this is something you haven't really heard a lot about yet. But as we looked at this, we've been looking at what we're calling the headquarters site. This piece of the property is not part of our negotiations around the E-Web site. This is what they've withheld for the headquarters, and so that's what we used as our assumption, our base case scenario of where we would build City Hall. Sorry, locate. Sorry.
Show that again.
Show which piece again?
Is it the red?
Red.
Yes, so this is just the outline. So, this is, as you can see, this is the north building, and this is the south building. This is the water fountain area, includes the parking as it goes underneath the viaduct and a little bit of this park piece up here.
And that's, that's what E-Web delineated as the admin property?
Yeah, that's the piece, that's, and there might-
There could be actually more, but this is what we called the headquarters site.
We or they?
We. This is our, based on the documents that we're working on, this is what we gave to the consultant team to consider as the site.
But we didn't ask about the whole property?
Am I following your question?
So, yes, I, I think I'm following, so, I guess what I would say is that we are negotiating, we are currently negotiating land sale of the E-Web site for everything except for this piece. So, when you talked about, could we locate City Hall at the headquarters site, we are, we just, under the assumptions of this, and you can modify this assumption, we are modifying, we are identifying the headquarters site as that site. And that we wouldn't use the whole site, just for the purposes of the analysis, so you could look at kind of an apples to apple-orange.
Remind people that we're running this like a regular work session, so please get in the queue.
Yeah. All right. So, I took a drink because this will take a little bit of explaining. So, as you can see, as you recall, in all of our earlier work, we are showing City Hall Phase One, which is the initial phase in yellow, and we're showing all the other services in this kind of spring green. That's how we use to modify and differentiate. When you move to E-Web, it's a little bit of a different situation because the building is larger. So, the existing north building, which is this one, and the existing south building, together have more than what your current Phase One program is. But we thought for the purposes of looking at the information and having something to compare it to, we would try to provide similar graphics across both. So, as you can see, the City Hall, the north E-Web building right here is 14,350 square feet, and you're, so we're showing the Phase One program would include the north building and would also include kind of this first floor, portion of the first floor. Then what this lighter green color is, is kind of the rest of the first, second, and third floor that I'm calling Phase One Plus, because you wouldn't go in and renovate this in a portion of a building, you would renovate all of it at one time. So, we were just trying to show, hey, you get this program, you get this much of your Phase Two program, and then sometime in a distant out year, probably eight years or beyond, you could pick up the fourth floor of Phase as part of your next Phase Two. And to complete the total package that you're representing in the other scenarios, you would have to build an additional building. And this is where it's just a, for purposes of analysis, we said, keep it on the headquarters site, don't make a judgment about whether it's better fit over here or over here. We're just trying to determine, is it feasible? And it's feasible. Does that make sense so far? So, this is combined between, so this, between all of these, we're at about 86,000 square feet, and then you pick up the other 11-something in the, when the fourth floor moves out of E-Web. We're going to talk in more detail about this later. I just wanted to tell you, this is what we're kind of evaluating. So, as we started down this path, you know, as we started, we had kind of our City Hall block, we were going to build Phase One and had space for Phase Two, and we had half the block for potentially a future courthouse or another development. These scenarios on the left indicate where you and the county commissioners directed us to do some work. So, Phase One, Scenario A, I, I'm putting these slides up here in a little bit of a green-yellow of certainty and where we might need clarity. This one is pretty clear. We know where it is, we own the land, we have a definite Phase Two land bank, and it's clear and it's, it's pretty certain. Phase One, co-locating with the courthouse, this is actually supposed to be spring green because we know that it's technically feasible, we own the land, but we also know that there's some probably more issues that we will need to talk through and work through in terms of how you co-locate, how you would co-locate a City Hall, and the values that you want for a City Hall and a courthouse, and the values you want for a courthouse, and how some of the uses can complement each other and may also conflict. And so, we know there's, it's a little bit less certain, we need a little bit more clarity about that. And we have some certainty on Phase Two being, Phase Two land bank essentially being right there at the Eighth and Pearl site. We know that that works to, if you want to put all of the services in one building, it could work in that location. Phase One, at the Butterfly Lot, both this and Phase Two are yellow under that scenario you directed us because we have, we know it technically feasibly works, but we have a lot more to learn about whether it's legal to build on the Butterfly Lot, what, how we, what deal we would negotiate, how we would work through that. And then also with Phase Two, similar kinds of questions, and you also introduce in the timing, it's uncertain when the courthouse will move out, so there's a little bit of uncertainty there. It's technically feasible, it's just a yellow. I drew a line from this one back up to Phase Two because you do have, always have this Phase Two certainty at Eighth and Pearl that could go with that option. And then Phase One at E-Web is just yellow because we have more questions, and that's part of what we're going to do tonight, is talk about how you want us to proceed forward with the analysis of E-Web given, because without your direction, we're kind of proceeding with some of the values associated with this, and I'm not certain that that's how you want us to proceed. So, we think we need to talk about that. So, with that, do you want me to just keep going? You want to pick this up?
Well, no, I'm happy to pick it up. So, as Sarah mentioned, and it's kind of illustrated by the previous chart that she shared, is that there are a lot of decisions that are considerations that need to be taken into account to help you all make a well-informed decision. And when we started down the path of looking at alternative options, one of the things that you wanted considered was to preserve your option to rebid this project in the winter of 2017. And given where we are and the information that's still outstanding in terms of legal decisions, full suite of information around all of the different options and the costing being scheduled, one of the things that we'd like to ask you tonight is, given the range of options and decisions, does council want to proceed with or postpone preparation of bid documents for this winter? And there's a couple of sub items down there, if yes, to proceed with rebid, move to direct the city manager to proceed with preparation of Phase One construction documents for an early 2017 rebidding of the project. If yes, to postpone, move to direct the city manager to postpone preparation of Phase One construction documents until Phase One site has been affirmed by council. So, I don't know, Mayor, if you'd like us to go through all of these, or you want to-
Let's do it one at a time.
Okay.
And let's just go around the table and hear from everybody, and then we'll see where we are. So, Chris, why don't you start?
Yeah, I think considering the cost and effort that would go into putting together a bid on a phase we're not confirmed yet, it wouldn't seem like a prudent thing to do. So, reluctantly, I would support postponing the bid till we're certain on where Phase One's going to be built.
Betty?
I think we should become certain soon enough to go out for bids in January. I don't know, we've been fooling with this for a long time now. And the longer it goes on, the more people, people who don't know anything, haven't thought about it at all, will suddenly say, well, if you can save money, let's do this. But it isn't just saving money, and we don't know that we can save money. We don't know what may come up. But we should decide what, by now, we should be able to decide what we think is best. And I understand that we will know about the Butterfly Lot soon. At least, the judge told, assured me that it wouldn't take years, that it would take a short time. And I think that we should make up our minds, and then, you, we were told before the bid, it gets more expensive the longer you wait. So, you wait another year, probably costs more. And I think we are, should be ready to make a decision. Thank you.
I want to ask a question before I go to Mike. So, let's say council makes a decision on schedule. How does that get into when the bid could be made?
If you make a decision on sometime between now and really early December to proceed with, I mean, it's really, you're, you're really right up against the time limit right now, but you would have to choose very certain, pretty quickly, that you want to proceed forward with Phase One in its current, current site at Scenario A.
And going back to Betty, what Betty said is neither one nor two, I think, is what you said, right? Betty, you would like it if they moved faster.
Yes, we can, we should know by early December whether we can use the Butterfly Lot, right?
That's our understanding, yes.
Okay. It wouldn't have to be the current site. We should be able to decide, how long are we going to talk about it?
I'm just trying to understand where you were landing on this.
I say we should decide which one and go out for bids in early 17. Things are only going to get worse, and people are going to wonder what is going on. People say, well, when are you going to have a City Hall? Maybe never.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I understand Betty's desire to move along. I personally would not want to see us rebid if that decision is today. I would say postpone. I think that's what I heard Betty say, because what we're asking is simply on the current site, right? Shall we today decide to go out and rebid on the current site?
Yes.
So-
No.
That's the question.
That's the question.
Okay. It could be either one.
Well, the specific question with this is in reference to the project that you have information on, and where we delayed, and looked at the option of rebidding in February, or February or March.
But we, can we do that if we decide on the other site?
It would have to be very, very quick, or the other site? No, there would have to be additional work to done, to be done.
You couldn't redesign the Butterfly Lot.
The only site that can have a, make a quick decision to rebid is the current site that moves the farmer's market.
Right.
Butterfly Lot entails the whole process.
Yes.
Or design.
That's later.
We can only rebid if we choose A.
I would not want us to rebid at this time. I want to reserve that option to do that at a future point. But I, I don't believe that's the wise course right now.
George?
Yeah, we should not, I don't think we should rebid right now. We still have that option, that we may land on that site, but we don't, we don't know yet. We, our intentions are not clear yet. And I, you know, we, we could rebid later in the winter, we could rebid in springtime for fall of 2017, start a construction. That kind of all depends on the construction climate. I mean, I have a lot of other projects going to be going on. We don't know that yet, but, but first of all, we need to decide where we want to do Phase One. And we're not, we're not there yet. There's still other information, I think, that we need. We need to learn, and we'll learn more tonight, I know, about the E-Web site. I think that we, I don't know, I think we need a finer-grained analysis of the feasibility of remodeling and remediating the courthouse, the county courthouse. That's, that's one option, is to remodel that building. Ultimately, that may not be feasible, but, so we, hopefully, we'll have, is that in the works? Has there been any, anyone looking at that to see if it's even feasible and how much it might cost to remediate and remodel? That's an important, I mean, that's one of our options, so that's something that we need to know. Someone has to do that work and bring us back. You know, well, yes, it could be done, but it's going to cost, you know, $20 million or, no, there's so much environmental problems that it's going to be $30 million, or we don't know what the answer would be. It could be, yes, it's eminently feasible, it should cost $10 to $15 million. So, you know, until we know, I think that's an important piece, it is one of the options. So, we, we, I know everyone wants to, we all want to see it go. We want to get it done. But there's still, we still need some more information, I think, before we make a really good decision. But yes, I say, we, it's pretty clear that we need to postpone the bid. And I think Counselor Zalina is absolutely right. With the uncertainty in the background here, people are not going to spend a lot of time submitting bids because it could fall apart, and then they've wasted all that time, so that's the reason for postponing. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I was just going to clarify that our early analysis was looking at whether or not, what the cost would be of renovating the courthouse. That was one of the sites, that was one of the options that was on the table. That's also one of the options you took off the table. The direction that we have from this group was to put the full Phase Two new construction on that site. However, because we did some of the early work, and we know that people have questions and curiosity about what the cost of renovating that is, we have asked them to continue to do a little bit of work, so we'll be able to speak at the JEO about, hopefully, just at a really high level, about what some of those costs are and why, why you can quickly get above a, you know, square footage cost by the time you have to kind of gut a building, abate it, do the seismic, update the systems. It quickly escalated, so we haven't done a thorough cost analysis of that.
Okay, thank you. I'd forgotten that, and I, I was just looking at the green, big green Lego block here, not looking. Fine, Clint said no, City Hall.
So, before I go on here, I just wanted to add that the job we have at hand right now, I think the upshot of the conversation as it has transpired thus far, is that you can, all of these are kind of feasible. And, and Phase Two is feasible in each of these, but you're only looking right now at where you want to put Phase One. Claire?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with much of the first part of what Counselor Brown was saying about postponing, that I think there's too much uncertainty. If we do deliberate and come to a decision before the end of this year, then we, you know, we could still bid, extends the timeframe out some, but not terribly. So, I would move to postpone.
And George Poling?
Yeah, I've always been one to urge us to keep moving things forward and get something accomplished as opposed to keep processing it. However, I think with this decision, I think this would be one of the few times that I think we need to kind of take a step back. So, I would be in favor in postponing for the time being. And then if something happens between now and the time we go in council break, we can always bring it back.
Frank?
I would say that I would concur with both, you know, Counselor Cyret and Counselor Poling, and I would be supportive of postponement. I don't think that we have fully vetted all of our options at this point. I also have several questions about, you know, what the length of time it's going to take for a fully completed City Hall project. That includes Phase One and Phase Two. How many years that's going to be, what the total cost is going to be, and what we will be committing future city councils as well as the community to, depending on the decisions we make around Phase One. So, you know, I would rather us be more deliberative and take the appropriate amount of time to make the right decision and not to make a hasty decision because that's what's in front of us.
So, let's confirm this by you putting that motion on the table.
Yeah, I think we need to move as expeditiously as possible forward, but what is the timeframe for the three different scenarios that we're looking at for City Hall in terms of how fast could we- could we, let's say we were able to, if we picked the current site, January, how fast could that become City Hall? How fast could Butterfly Lot become City Hall and how fast could E-Web become City Hall?
There's a range of timelines and some of them involve, so E-Web would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 2020. And the scenario that involves us sharing a lot with the Circuit Court, I believe that's Option B, would be 2019.
2018.
2018?
A was 2017. B was 2018. And C was 2019.
Okay. Thank you for that. Yeah.
What's different about B from A with regard to the City Hall building that extends the time?
The architects said they would need to do some additional work in the interface between the court building and the City Hall building.
Which would have a couple of months.
Right.
Six months, maybe. Okay. So, so, all right. And then, so rebidding doesn't apply to Scenario B, it only applies to Scenario A?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, I was thinking about the uncertainty associated with all this. We still have three options on the table if we went around to bid. And if I were in my professional life, looking at this, to bid on this, I'd probably pass on bidding it because there's too much uncertainty. It's very expensive to put together a bid. And having an unknown selection at this point would, and then it not come to fruition would be a waste of effort and time and money. So I probably wouldn't bid. So I think the uncertainty that we have around these sites creates a circumstance where if we rebid right now, we wouldn't get any, we have a possibility of not getting any bids. And so with that in mind, I would say that postponing it is also appropriate, but doing as fast as possible.
I move to direct the city manager to postpone preparation of Phase One construction documents until Phase One site is affirmed by council. Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Discussion item number two.
So discussion item number two, we talked a little, Sarah talked a little bit about the work that the team has been doing with respect to the E-Web scenario. And the team has spent a lot of time kind of delving into, learning as much as they can about the building. As you may know, the building, E-Web was built in 1988. And so it's kind of hitting that 30-year point. The infrastructure's starting to wear out and needing to be replaced. Some things that we've learned about the building are, for example, that they have a higher EUI rating of about 150, 155. But again, that's related to some of the uses that they have for the building. It's a 24/7 operation. And so we were looking at, you know, what sorts of standards, there's some seismic standards that we would need to potentially address as well as just thinking about the efficiency of the way that building works. And so what we were looking for tonight is some guidance to help us in completing our costing because of that, what we want to do is be thoughtful and thorough with the E-Web analysis as we are with the other three scenarios. And absent direction, what we would do is probably apply the same values and direction around, you know, lead gold target, high-performance building, have a strong civic character and presence, welcoming, all of those kinds of things that we've talked a lot about over the course of the last couple of years. But there are different options because it is a building that's existing to have a different range of possibilities. And so for tonight, the discussion item is for the E-Web scenario, what level of renovation or improvement does council want staff to assume in building project estimates? So from that, as we said, it could be, you just want the keys, change the carpet, put some paint on the walls, but try to make it fit, right? Up to you want something that really mirrors what we were trying to accomplish as close as possible. There are some things that we wouldn't be able to accomplish because we're moving into a building that's already existing and you can accomplish more in a brand-new building in terms of energy efficiency and some of those goals that we have. So what we would, we would welcome is some conversation about things that are important for you to have in terms of your information with decision-making with respect to costing estimates and how to apply some of the values that we've been using for Phase One project for City Hall and how that would apply to E-Web cost estimating.
And I think it's kind of, what they're asking for is a little bit of your help in having an apples-to-apples and oranges-to-oranges discussion because you can't really compare opening a door and walking in to an existing building that doesn't have all the things that you're interested in with the cost of what it would be to do a building with the things that you're really interested in. So just for you to think about that. And we'll start with Alan.
I agree. I think apples-to-apples comparison is what we try to look at. Again, if we're going to move to a City Hall, it's going to be a 50-year building at least. So that would necessitate refurbishing a, how old is it, 40-year-old building? I'm sure there's lots of mechanical systems, electrical systems that need to be rebuilt. Plus, it needs to be fit what we would use it for as opposed to what E-Web used it for. Getting, the energy efficiency is still very important to me and so is the gold lead target. And then the, and having it be a seismic building is extremely important. That building was built before the new codes were in place. So can you talk to a little bit about what you know about the seismic issues that relate to that building?
Very exciting. One of the folks I've been working with.
Thank you, Carl Sherwood, Robertson Sherwood Architects. Yes, there has been a Tier One, Level One seismic evaluation of building as part of what we're looking into, which only goes into trying to identify how this building, at the time it was built, would compare with buildings that would be designed today. The use of the building will not change. It's still an office building. It's still a Level Two hazard, seismic hazard identification, but the codes have changed. So if we want to bring it up to today's codes for that hazard level classification, we would build some costs in to strengthen the connections between the wall and floor systems, column systems, roof diaphragms, things like that, to bring it more in line with current codes. That said, it's not, because there's no change of use or occupancy, it's not a direct requirement to do that. So that's the sort of level of decision you need to make as to whether to make that investment to increase efficiency or not.
What's a Level Two and is that compared to what we've designed for?
Well, it's a hazard classification for the type of occupancy. Better comparison would be for your fire and police stations. You would, those are essential facilities, so there'd be a higher classification. In the case of an office building, whether it be government or a private office building, it's considered a lower level. It's really for life safety as opposed to preservation of the building.
What was the level we were planning to build the new City Hall at?
We were not planning to build to essential facility standards. That was a decision that council made previously.
It was above just basic office building?
Yeah.
Right? It was kind of like two-plus, but not all the way to three?
What the level is, Mike?
It was, wasn't it 1.25 versus 1.5?
1.5 instead of?
Well, 1.5 is essential, police and fire first responders. 1.25 is a life safety.
Yeah.
Standard. What?
One is just a regular office building?
Probably, yeah. And what I'm hearing is that the codes to get to a 1.25 maybe are different today than they were when it was first built.
Right.
That's the...
Right, right. So, yeah, I guess having all those things in place so that there is an apples-to-apples comparison makes sense to me. I'm wondering about the square footage. You went over that real quickly. Go back to that slide.
Moving on.
Anybody know how?
It wasn't on a slide. Yeah, I just told you what the numbers were.
Yeah, right. So you had the, so that's 14,300 square feet for the north building. And then all of it, but the fourth floor is 86,000 square feet?
73, 75, 7 for all of this, not including that fourth floor. The fourth floor is an additional 11,8. Close to, this is, that part that I'm going around right now is 11,008.
And what was the programmed need for Phase?
So if you wanted to, if you wanted to show the same that you have in the other scenarios, it would require a new building of 67,000 square feet. And that would be the total program, the same as, so these, all of those colors right there add up to be the same as the green and yellow right here.
Right.
Okay.
So it is apples-to-apples then?
In terms of space, yeah.
But the advantage that E-Web has is you have part of the Phase Two.
Yeah.
You have part of it, but the other side of that is it's more expensive upfront.
Right. So I think at some point, you know, at some point, we'll, you'll, we'll leave this conversation away from, you know, and I think that's the next section is how much do you really need to know about Phase Two in order to make your Phase One? Because I'm starting to, I'm going to introduce something radical, that we stop thinking of it in terms of phases and start thinking of it as City Hall and a city services building because it's not, it's, they're a little bit different. Because already, if you think about how we are in downtown right now, we have city services sprinkled around in different, Phase Two is already here. It's just sprinkled around, the city services are sprinkled around. So it's not really like you're building for a new service. It's a different way of organizing us into an ecosystem of a building as opposed to an ecosystem of a downtown.
Right, right. And the cost formula is how cheap is the rent that we're paying compared to how much would the debt service be in buying a new building and comparing those two? So it's not just eliminating rental fees, but you pick up new building costs. So if where we're staying right now is cheap enough, then this, moving into a bigger building actually costs more?
Yes.
Right. So basically, the yellow and green, light green part is about 86, about 87,000 square feet. So it's about two and a half times what we're actually programming right now for Phase One. So that's why it would cost a lot more if you just did square foot, right?
It seems to me that one of the questions, maybe not for now, because I think we're still just talking about Phase One, but if the conversation about a future Phase Two, it's not only about the cost of the way we're doing it now as compared to the cost of doing it in the future in one space, but it's also what the functionality you gain from that that has to be taken into consideration. There are other kinds of costs involved in thinking about the benefit or not of everybody being in proximity to each other. And also, again, the kind of flexibility and functionality of the building that you won't have perhaps in a building that's already there. So those are all things to be thought about. Greg, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I kind of in the same ballpark with, based on, you know, before what Sarah said is I'm looking at functionality. And that is, you know, eventually we want to get to a point, and this is what people say to us in the community, or at least say it to me, where they would have one site, one stop, where they can actually engage city government in one place, not all over the map. And so my questions around, you know, E-Web are, you know, yeah, we want to get the same kind of valuation out of this as we would a new building in some respects. But I take this to a little bit of a different matter for, forgive me, Chris, on this one. But, you know, as my mother would say, I need a car. I don't need a Mercedes, I need a Ford. And in this context, I think people in this community want a Ford, a building that is functional, that, you know, brings together all the elements of the city that we need and that includes a Phase One into a, moving into a Phase Two, that we bring it up to code in the way that we want to, you know, have this and what it's supposed to be. And that we, you know, are, you know, giving people the value for their tax dollars that they're expecting to get out of it. You know, we hear from people all the time, regular residents, business community, variety of other places in the community, and some other people have some other ideas, but I hear the majority of people saying, give us a functional City Hall, you know? And that's what I'm really looking at. And if that means that, you know, we can, you know, retrofit E-Web to be able to, you know, give the community that level of functionality, then for me, that would make more sense than for us to look at, you know, trying to build something from scratch that, you know, eventually we may or may not get to Phase Two or we may get to a situation where, you know, Phase Two is not feasible from a financial standpoint. And, you know, I think we need to look down the road at a total, at the total package as what happens when it's thoroughly finished. And I think that I'd like to see where we come out with, with a full analysis of what E-Web would look like.
George?
Thank you. I came on the council in 2003 and we had some discussions then about the new City Hall. And there's one topic that's been constant the whole time, and that is bringing all the services into one spot or one area. So if we could do that here, that would be great. You know, I think it'd be more efficient, not only for the city, but also for the people using the city services. We definitely want to make the investment to upgrade the seismic standards. I mean, it'd be ridiculous to, you know, purchase a building that we know doesn't meet. So we need to make sure that those are up to date. Whatever we do, we may, we may need to make sure that we do it right because this is a building that we'll be in for a long time and that we need to be proud of. And to what Christie was saying, I believe we need to use, mirror the values that we're currently using as best we can with doing a remodel of the E-Web building and test route we're going to take. I think we need to stick to the values that we originally came up with because I think they're excellent.
Claire?
Yeah, I agree with Counselor Poling. I have a question, though. When we were way back when, when I first came on council and we went through the various decision points and E-Web got taken off the table at that point, I'm glad it's coming back, but there was some preliminary work done there. So I'm assuming you're building on that and that some of the values that the council had identified was embedded in that work. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've been applying the council values because that's been consistent all along throughout the project. And I know the team is taking into consideration, but what we're looking at in terms of E-Web isn't the exact same analysis that we did previously. It was a smaller footprint the last time we were looking at E-Web. And so we're having to do some, take a different look. And it has been a little while ago, so some changes, we want to make sure that we consider all the changes that have been made.
Okay. And then to Counselor Zalink's point that if we move into a space where we have more than we need at the time, could we do what E-Web's done and rent some of it out?
It's always an option to consider, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, I agree with Counselor Poling. I would want us to do this comparison as closely as possible. Obviously, you know, there was design in the first iteration of the City Hall at the current location, you know, with transparency and throughness that wouldn't be achievable in the E-Web site. So I'm not necessarily suggesting a full design of, you know, what city council chambers might look like, but some estimate of moving towards a city council chamber that embodies the things you know we've asked for in that design. I would want, you know, since this council voted not to go to the higher seismic standard, I would want that same, what we did vote for to be applied to what E-Web would need. Same with the lead gold. And, you know, I think the building as it stands now reflects a lot of the values that we've identified in terms of stewardship, identity, participation, simplicity, and connecting us with the river, which I think is kind of a newly emerging value that we've had as we've talked about connecting down, down to the river. So those are my thoughts.
George?
I think it should match the, you know, as closely as possible, the values that we have for Phase One. You know, be as energy efficient as possible, life safety standard, seismic, you know, rating, at least, minimum. Maybe see what it would cost to upgrade that a little bit. Otherwise, just, you know, pretty much the same values. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I couldn't agree more that we need an apples-to-apples comparison, and that we should use the same values. But let me just say this. A couple of the values, both identity and Eugene at 200, two of the values that we've been using all along, I think are important. They're certainly forward-looking, both of them. Every time we talk about City Hall, the same words are used that we used earlier tonight when we said, "The historic core, the historic center of our downtown." Those are backward-looking words. I think that every forward-looking document the city has talks about Willamette to Willamette. It talks about the return to the river. It talks about the importance of it as the identity of our community in the future. And I think based on the plans we already know about with the expansion of the university, with the expansion of the market district, and what Mr. Robie has planned in that area, with the expansion and this fantastic success we've had downtown in both tech and financial areas, that our downtown is changing more to the river. And that, I believe, will, in the long term, become our core. So in order to meet these two values of both identity and Eugene at 200, it seems to me we should be talking about this in an apples-to-apples comparison with other city plans and other city goals, and the same sort of language we use when we talk about those other areas. And when we talk about stewardship, I think Greg hit on an important point, that, I, I liked that, the Mercedes versus Ford analogy, that's, that was nice. The way I would define it is to say that stewardship is understanding the difference between need and want. We have identified the things that we want, and, and are ideal for what those values look like in building a new place. And that's wonderful, that's what we should do. But I think it's important for us to recognize what we need. The, the value of the apples-to-apples comparison for me is, new construction gives us only what we want, and it may not give us only what we need. And the importance of that is the time value of money. We can get what we need, and incrementally, over time, have it created and transformed into what we want. And we can do it in an, in an affordable and incremental way. And so for me, I think stewardship means recognizing that difference, that this gets us to the place where we're moving forward, and gives us the ability to continue to move towards our, our, our best outcomes. Thank you.
Betty?
Okay, we abandoned stewardship long ago, when we destroyed what we had. That's, that, so why talk about that? I came on the council in 1997, people were already wanting to tear down City, City Hall. If we went to E-Web, people would probably be wanting to tear that down in a few years, because it's an old building, and it's as old as City Hall was when they went, started trying to tear it down. And as for the price, saving money, when, we found out when we demolished, when they demolished City Hall, the price kept going up, and the price of, of rebuilding kept going up. And the same thing would happen if you start trying to adapt E-Web. But the main thing is about E-Web, it is in the wrong place. And the City Hall exists for the people, for the citizens, not for just the city council. It is in, it should be close to the county building. It should be, yeah, we talked about consolidating it. Originally, we used to talk about when the fire department moved out, and the police moved out, then we could bring the rental places, people back. That never happened. I don't know why it never happened, but it didn't happen. And it would be good if all the city was together, but certainly the parts that the public needs to relate to need to be in one spot, and it needs to be close to the county. And I don't think the county's going to move down to the E-Web site. People do not know, I know when I first came to town, I had some question about my property or the adjoining property or something, and I didn't know whether I had a city question or a county question. But when I went down, at least they just said, "Go across the street." They didn't say, "Walk up through two blocks and walk over that way." Another thing wrong with the E-Web site is that it is not accessible to people who don't drive. It is not, in the daytime, maybe, it would be easy enough to take a bus and walk down there. But if you want to attend a night meeting, and we should, we want to be accessible for people who want to come to council meetings, you want to come to a night meeting, you walk out of that place at 10 o'clock, and you have to get a bus, you're going to have to walk down some dark streets. And I don't think that the buses, buses are going to start running up there on council meeting nights. So I think it's, that alone is enough reason not to go there, in my opinion, whether it's a beautiful building or not. It needs to, it's for the, it's for the public, for the benefit of the public. Thank you.
Chris?
You can do nothing.
For those who want it.
One of the reasons we abandoned and tore down the old City Hall was because it was seismically inappropriate. In the course of an event, a seismic event, the building would be unsafe. If it didn't collapse, it would at least be unusable. And I think it's interesting for me that we're saying, we, we want to move into a building, whether it's new or one we renovated, that is only marginally better than that. In other words, if there's a major seismic event, the building will be unusable. And so we will have spent an enormous amount of money on a building that will be closed in the event of an earthquake, another one of the buildings that we can't use. So we'll have to set a tent up somewhere, and that's what we'll do, our thing, because the building we've paid all this money for will not be usable. I, I like the Mercedes versus Ford analogy, except the one I would use would be a new car versus a used car. And a new car comes with a warranty, it's brand new, it will run, and it works. And I don't have to pay a ton of money for it, but at least it's new. If I buy a car that's five years old or 10 years old, it's a used car, so, you know, that has all that built-in psychological value, but I'll have to change the timing belt. And then pretty soon, the engine bearings will have to be replaced. I mean, I have a used car, and I just got done spending $480 on a transmission cable because it wore out. It wears out. And so now we're saying, we get this used building, we got to fix it to make it run well for the next several years. What will that cost? We have to buy the building, and then we have to make the building functional and workable and able to be operated. So it gets back to the notion of function. I'm not afraid of a used building, but I'm also not afraid of a new building, simply because it's a new building. I want to get the right building, whether it's new or it's used, but I want to get a building that's functional, that will work. I don't want a palace, but I want something appropriate, and I can get that new as well as I can get it used. I think longevity is an important consideration. Right now, the E-Web building, and I've toured it, doesn't have a council chamber. The closest they have to a place where you could hold meetings, city council meetings, is a room like this. So is it appropriate for the city of Eugene to hold its city council official meetings in a room like this? No. You'd need to renovate a place there. There's probably a place where you could do it, up in the cafeteria on the second floor, but you got to turn that into a council chamber, and what does that cost? And how do people get to the second floor, and how does all of that work? And I know that we, we talk about the riverfront as being the new place where we all want to be, but to me, downtown is downtown. I mean, it's, it's a defined place, whether it's in a plan or in people's minds, downtown is downtown. If you want to move to the riverfront, do it acknowledging the fact you're moving out of downtown. The city government of Eugene is moving out of downtown, and that would be a concern to me.
So I'll have a couple of comments, and then I'll just see if anybody, anybody else just need, wants to make more comments this round, and then we'll move on to the next question item. What I would say is, I don't think the public wants us to, nor do I think it's good for us just to make do. I think we have to, if you're going to go to this effort, you should have something that's, functions well for the, for the duties that we have as a city. So I think that's important, the functionality is really important. I think that it's forward-thinking is really important. I think we have big goals with the CRO and those kinds of things that we need to be aim, aiming at with whatever building we're in. So I don't think you can short-change your major goals as a city by, by not doing what you need to do when you need to do it. So that, I think all those things need to be taken into account in, in the quality of the building, and the way it functions, and lets people work and do the job we're supposed to do. And you've all touched on parts of that. And the other part for me is, I think there's just a decision point here. If all things are even, where do you want to be? Because one of the reasons we're in the midst of this big discussion with the county is because there's enough people around this table who said they want to have a civic center downtown. That's why we're having the discussion with the county about this area. So I think, you know, your first, one of your first decisions, other than all else aside, is where do you really, where do you all really want that to be? And if it's kind of a, you could make a case for any of it, what is the preferred place? And then you move from there. And, and then, as I listen to you, I think you all, or most of you, want it to be of the kind of quality of places you could really do a good job of doing city business. So just want to add that. So I know Alan wants to talk, anybody else? Claire? Okay, Alan?
Yeah. Yeah, I think one of the things we found out from the old City Hall during deconstruction is that it was a worse building than we thought it was. It was going to cost a lot more than we thought to, to revent, renovate it, when we started to pull it apart. When I look at all these options, I think all the options get us to a consolidated City Hall, you can get Phase Two in there, and so they all work from that perspective for me. From a functionality standpoint, they all can get us there, it's just a matter of how much money do you spend to get us there? So they all can kind of get us there from the functionality standpoint. Operating costs are, become important, I think, in this conversation, because our, that's our budget constraint. So over the long term, from a budget perspective, having good operating costs is, is very important. That, so that brings into play energy efficiency, and also the quality and the longevity that we expect of the building. That's that kind of used car, new car thing that Chris was talking about. The other thing I think about is location. And all of the options, A, B, and C, are in the downtown core. While I love the river, and I love being on the river, and it's really pretty there, and the building, well, when you're looking at from the river, it's, it looks great. When you're looking at it from the other side, I think it's ugly, but when you're, so that's all nice, it's, but it is very isolated from downtown. It, it is not downtown. You got the viaduct on one side, and the railroad on the other side, so you're kind of separated out from it. And I share some of Betty's concerns about accessibility. So question that the mayor brought up, I think is an appropriate one, do you want to move from downtown? If that's okay, then moving to, to the E-Web spot is, is an okay move. I'm, I'm still thinking about that. I don't, I don't know that that's a good trade-off for us. And then finally, when it comes to the, this, the upfront cost of the E-Web become important. It's two and a half times bigger building if we're just doing dollars per square foot. That means it's two and a half times more expensive upfront to buy E-Web, because you have to buy the whole building. So at two and a half times, so instead of 18 million, it's like $45 million, it's $27 million more than what we're planning on spending right now. Where would we come up with that extra money to pay for it upfront, without doing a bond? And so that's a substantial change in how we would pay for this, and where we would get that money to go, to go forward. I, I'm not sure we could get a layaway plan from E-Web. I think they want to sell the property and, and move, move on. So just on a square foot basis, the, the costs are going to be substantially different. Do we have a, a plan for how we would do that? And what, have you guys talked about the location issues, about being downtown?
We haven't talked about that. We talked about that previously when we considered the E-Web option, as, you know, location was one of the things. And it is one of the values and consideration points for council to consider as we move forward. Our intent is to understand what we need to apply to the costing model in terms of providing that information and bringing it back, and then how you all want to apply all of your other values and considerations with that information to complement your decision-making.
Okay. The other thing is, too, that in the case of E-Web, you're talking about the cost of land and the cost of the building, not just one or the other. You're talking about both, right? When you talk about the property that we're, if we build on our own property, you're talking about the cost of a building, but not the cost of the land. And if you're talking about the butterfly lot, you're really talking about a possible trade of properties that are owned by two different jurisdictions. So you've got different kinds of addition going on here of what it would really, what the cost would really be. I've got Claire, and then Mike, and then George Polling.
Yes, I'm a little concerned that Councilor Zelenka's thrown out numbers, because the whole point here is to dial down into the numbers. And I remember when we discussed this before, that the E-Web option was the most bang for our buck. Now, that may not be the case anymore, but that's the reason I'm leaning back and trying to, and glad that we're having this conversation. So I hope that we will wait till we actually get some dollars in front of us before we assume that moving there is going to be twice as expensive as what we've been talking about. And I've been really concerned about the Phase One, because we diminished that design in order to make it more affordable. And so while we might not need to buy the land that it's on, we're getting, I think, a lesser product if we go down that road, considering our budget constraints. And I'm concerned, to, to reference what Councilor Clark said, that if we stayed with Phase One, we might not get what we need or what we want. So I think one thing in terms of the E-Web building, in terms of costing, we would really want to look into what systems, in terms of environmental systems, would need to be refurbished, what, what might be the cost estimates for those. And then I just want to address a couple of other things. I, I don't see anywhere on the project values consolidation as a, a value, nor co-locating with county services. So if that was an important piece to the council in the past, it didn't make it on the list. And we already decided that Phase One City Hall wouldn't, won't survive an earthquake, won't be usable after an earthquake. That's a council decision, a majority made here. I didn't agree with it. I didn't think it was the right decision, but that's the decision that was made. So if we're going to compare the E-Web building, it needs to be compared in the same way. And lastly, I, I really push back on this idea that the, that going to E-Web would just benefit council and staff, and only be some wonderful thing for them. The public used to use the E-Web building all the time for evening meetings. Lots of social organizations used that building in the community rooms, which are now closed because they've rented it out to a private company. People were down there into the evening at meetings. Now, perhaps they couldn't walk out and, and walk to the downtown bus station very easily, but I don't think that's a reason to, to throw the idea out. And it was very much valued by the community, and when they'd go down and, and do events there, the location was part of the value that they had with the building.
Mike, and then George Polling, and then Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm hopeful that when we talk about apples-to-apples comparisons, we start with what Alan said, and go on to have the fuller conversation in many of the things that Claire mentioned, and then add the rest. So in other words, I'm hoping that we're having this conversation on a cost-per-square-foot basis, so that we know if we choose this option, we own the land, but we got to build something new and the interior of it, and that's going to be X per square foot, net, total. And if we say, well, if we want to buy E-Web, that's going to cost X, and we won't have to do any building now, we'll have to refurbish a little, but that's going to be X per square foot, okay? So, so that we have an accurate cost considering, I mean, an accurate comparison considering all the extemporaneous costs, because there's three areas. There's either, there's refurbishing, there's buying, and there's selling. If we choose E-Web, or if we choose Option B, no, excuse me, if we choose E-Web or Option C, we can sell that entire block, and that def, that, that lowers the cost in total per square foot as a total project cost. And if we're working with E-Web on the other land and find a different, more creative way, that's another way to lower the cost per square foot of the total project. So if we're going to compare apples to apples, I hope we're doing it on complete costs, and not just some slice of it. I also want to push back on the idea a little bit, with respect, of choosing location first... I also want to push back on the idea a little bit with respect of choosing location first or separately than all these other considerations. I think that location is important, just like all of these values are important. Stewardship's important, Eugene 200's important. All of these values are important, and we should not make the decision about location in isolation. I think that's a very bad way to make this decision. And lastly, I would say that I, I appreciate though the mayor and Alan's comments, because I think they under, underline and underscore what I said earlier, and it's this. The idea of us having our city hall at E-Web does not represent the city of Eugene leaving downtown. It's, it represents our city's understanding and fulfillment of the goals we've had for years for downtown to move to the river. That's what we've been trying to do for years. And we're just recognizing that that's what tomorrow looks like, and it's what we've been planning for.
Uh, George Polling?
Thank you. Yeah, Claire brought up one of the points that I was making, and that was that we all need to use some caution when we're talking about the cost of the E-Web building versus building new at some other location, because we haven't even started looking at that. So I think we just need, we need to be really cautious about that. Um, you know, having had some time to think about the seismic standards, how difficult would it be to get the costing of the 1.25 versus the 1.5, uh, to get the difference in, in, uh, in cost on that?
I can't speak to the level of difficulty from a technical perspective, but if that's information that you need to help inform your decision-making, we will work on getting that for council.
Yeah, because I'm having second thoughts about my vote. The other thing, yeah, certainly the, the E-Web property, I feel like it's isolated, but with the vision that we have for the riverfront redevelopment, and like Mike has pointed out, our overall provision of the city to, to start moving back to the river, I think in, in the long run, it won't be isolated, it won't be such a scary, dark place at night. And then the last thing, I, I, I agree with the mayor that we all are here discussing this, as well as with the county commissioners, because, you know, we decided it was the time for us to all to get together. But the reason why we're now discussing E-Web again is because when we started the JEO discussions, E-Web, as far as I was current, concerned, was off the table, even though my good friend Mike kept saying, let's buy E-Web, let's buy E-Web. But since we started that discussion, we've gotten a definitive answer, or statement from E-Web, that now that property is available for sale. So that's, we're not abandoning what we're doing with the county commissioners, we've just added the E-Web property into our discussion. We, we had to, to be fiscally responsible, we had to add that to our discuss, overall discussion.
Greg.
And I'm going to preface my comments by, I say, I'm not committed to any one of these options at this point. But I will say this, you know, E-Web is part of downtown. There's a federal building that was built not too far away from that. We also have an urban renewal district that we are going to have some kind of major investment in at some point, when, you know, property changes hands and all the rest of that, that's part of a continuum from the university, along the river, and all the way, all the way through. And so, you know, I look at the map and, you know, I've walked it over the past 30 years. You know, it's three blocks from where the existing site of, you know, the old city hall is. And, you know, like I said, there was a new federal building built, there is the old federal building, and it's part of a broader vision of what downtown is than just what the historic core of downtown is. And so I think that, you know, we need to be looking at how we leverage all of our assets and the continuity of the space between the university, what is traditionally downtown, the riverfront, and the eventual development of the riverfront, and then even going across the bridge over to Coburg. Because, you know, E-Web is not located in Santa Clara. It's located in downtown Eugene. And I think that we need to keep that in mind. The people that's getting ready to move completely out of downtown is E-Web itself, and they're moving out in my neighborhood. They're already there. So, you know, I, I think that we need to be very, you know, visionary in terms of what the city is ultimately going to look like in 50, 100 years from now, and not just be focused on what it looked like in the 19th century.
Uh, some, kept following in on something that, um, George said. Do we actually have an offer from E-Web to purchase it? Have they made an offer to us to buy the building?
No, what they have, what they have said, my understanding is both in their commission, uh, meeting, and then Frank has mentioned to me that, um, they would have an interest in moving, uh, to their current site with the rest of their property. They have not declared its surplus yet, for example, which is really part of the legal process for...
So the building is not formally for sale? It's just, it's kind of, you know, you, through the grapevine, we've heard they, they're thinking about moving out and that maybe it would be for sale?
Uh, they have not officially set us for sale. They have indicated that intent, both in their commission meetings, and then Frank has mentioned that in...
Okay, so it's more than just a rumor. There's a, there's an intent there, but it's not been formalized yet.
No, I was just going to say the timelines that we're working with, which would have indicated a, a move-in date of 2020, so three years out to get there, and the eight years out for, for numbers that we're working on with E-Web.
Okay, and that's in conversation with them? You've kind of worked out that?
We tried to come up with what are the assumptions we should build in that seemed reasonable.
Okay, okay. Um, when did we start negotiating with E-Web on the, the riverfront property? When did you first start negotiating that?
Yeah, that's a good point. Uh, 18 months ago, 12 to 18 months ago.
12 to 18 months ago, so a year and a half ago? Uh, and you haven't finalized those negotiations at this point?
That's true.
So using that as kind of a guideline for what the negotiations might look like? It may be 18 months, two years before we nego, even just to reach the agreement on the property itself. Then you have the work that would need to be done to get it ready, and you've got design work and architect, based on what we've already experienced with this city hall, you're probably talking about another 18 months to two years. Uh, then you actually have the construction, which means, I think 2020 is overly optimistic. I think we're now talking about a completed city hall in more like 2022, 2023. Um, and that seems like an awful long time, when we have options in front of us, that, that could be done much sooner than that. I don't want speed to be the determination, but on the other hand, it looks like there's a lot of unknowns that we don't, we don't, we don't have at this point. Dollars, timelines, a whole lot of, and I agree, we don't know the dollars, we don't know the timelines, we don't know the conditions. Um, there's still a lot of questions to be answered, and I just look at it and I say, those answers are going to mean, we're now looking at a date to complete a city hall, 2022, 2023, quite a long time from now, simply to go through all that process. If we're comfortable with that, that's okay. I wanted to have the city hall finished last year, or this year. Um, and now we're talking about, you know, five, six years from now, seven years from now. It just seems like a long time, um, to, to, to buy an old building and fix it up.
Just, uh, remember, uh, tonight, really all we're asking, um, this is actually helpful conversation as we move forward, and this will be, my guess is you'll continue this particular type of conversation over the next, uh, many weeks. Uh, and, uh, I wanted to make sure we clarify what the direction is on this one before we move on to the next discussion. So whenever you're ready to do that, I just want to make sure.
Want to motion?
What kind of clarification are we getting here?
Do you want a motion?
Um, so I just want to say a couple of things before we try to land this in some way for you, is that, um, I don't think it's, it's necessary to badmouth either location to, to prefer one over the other. They both have their vali, their, their good values. And I do think we've talked about connecting to the river, but I would also point out that our downtown is only sort of two years back, and it's still pretty fragile. And we're trying to give, breathe new life into our park blocks, and that's an important piece of the discussion as well. So you have to put all those different values together to figure out where that, where that best place is. It's not, one is perfect and the other's a dog. It really is that there are things that you've been working hard on for a long time that it connects with, and you need to be thinking about that. And, uh, and I, I would venture to say that we're always going to love E-Web because of the connection to the river and that whole, that whole location. So I'm not pushing one way or another, but I do think you don't want to walk away from, from thinking about how does, how does your decision connect to a pretty fragile, new, trying to, uh, firm itself, down, reinvigorated downtown? That's an important question. What do you gain from having civic connections in the center of downtown? What does this do to trying to reinvigorate the park blocks and make them really the center of our urban core here? Those are all things that you need to be taking into consideration as you make, um, as you make this decision. So I don't know, John, it seems like what we've said is, uh, the question was, um, yes, right here. Question was, what level of renovation improvement does council want staff to assume in project estimates? How do you think you've, how do, what do you think of the information that you?
Uh, what, uh, I've heard is you want us to evaluate E-Web as a, a lead gold. A high-performance building trying to get as close to EUI of 30, uh, in particular. Were there other?
Uh, I also heard the seismic piece.
Oh, yeah, seismic of 1.25.
Right, or higher.
Yeah, well, what I heard is 1.25, but then also it's a separate piece eventually, is what it would take to get any particular project to 1.5, and that would be regardless of the scenario, so that's sort of a separate piece.
And functionality and programming, a little bit of information along those, along, not just what, what it would take to function in the building a little bit.
What I, I heard was that...
Systems will be a part of that whole high-performance.
What I heard was the values, I heard that from almost everybody, the, the values are the same. What they want out of the building, whether it's renovated or new, are very similar in terms of, um, efficiency and functionality.
So somebody would be happy to make that motion, that would be helpful for us just as we...
Okay, well, let's think.
Go ahead, Greg. So moved.
Can we have some...
So, uh...
Glenn, maybe Glenn can help us with that.
I haven't worked in the values language, but this is what I wrote out about three minutes ago. Move our direct city staff to cost out an E-Web option using as close to an apples-to-apples comparison with respect to the values as is practicable.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded? And a motion. Mike?
Uh, again, I would, I would urge that we, i- it sounds like when we get to that, we're going to be talking about costs, right? Now, again, we're talking about just the cost of renovating in isolation, as opposed to building new and renovating that space in isolation, without all the other financial factors that come into play. So I would hope that in that motion, you're hearing us say, this, you know, the, the money gleaned from the sale of the other land, that all of the financial pieces, the cost of purchase, all of the other financial pieces that come into play that make an accurate per-square-foot cost.
What I would, what I, the way I would say it is, is this is only one piece of a broader economic, um, analysis that you will probably want to go through. So this piece is, is if we decide how much it costs to make it lead gold, certain things that have to happen to the building in order to do that. Now, in the context of, um, what does that mean for timing, for leases, uh, for sale of the property and all of that, that's a, a broader piece of the economic package that comes together.
And what we pay while we wait.
Yeah, so all those other pieces will have to be presented, and then you can sort of work through some of those as well.
But Alan and then George Polling?
Yeah, just, um, to clarify what I was talking about in terms of the cost, you, when we're doing this apples-to-apples comparison, we're talking about building a 35,000 square-foot building, but if we buy E-Web, you can't buy 35,000 square feet, you got to buy 87,000 square feet. And so it's two and a half times as much as the 35,000. So that, those two things can't be apples-to-apples. How, how are you going to deal with that? I mean, that's 18 million versus 45 million.
But I think that's one of those other factors. So if we know that it costs $10 to do a current phase one, and it costs $13 to do all of E-Web, then I think part of your conversation will be, is the, do you want to move forward with the other $3, because it makes sense, either square-foot value, space, timing, or it doesn't make sense, because we don't have the money to do it, we don't have the money. And so I think those are part of the, it, it's, it's not going to be able to bring everything down to a single number, that then you, then you can just say, wow, that number's bigger than that number. I think there's several, uh, pieces of the puzzle that individually and then eventually collectively, you're going to have to put together and say, this is what we want to... As long as when we do that, so far what we've done is we've said, build new and remodel are the same price per square foot. So as long as we keep that going forward, I, I don't understand why it would be different for E-Web. You know, I think that's why we've hired folks to, to dive into it a little bit more. So for example, if you want to move from a 155 EUI currently to something close to 30, you're probably going to have to redo all the HVAC system and put in new windows, right? So...
It's 40 years old.
You know, so I don't know how much that costs, but they do. And so then they can start bringing us a little bit more definitive answers to those, rather than just a little bit higher...
Right, as long as it's apples-to-apples is...
Right, and that's...
That's the intent of this motion, and I support it.
George, George Polling?
Yeah, this is a minor thing. I, I realize we kind of snuck up on Glenn on the, the motion, but I, I don't think that we can direct staff. I think that the motion needs to be...
Yeah, direct the manager.
Glenn!
It was, it was, it's not, it's not small.
Throw the city manager into the box.
Was the motion direct the staff?
Staff, yeah.
Good catch. I was, I was impressed that he already had it going though, before we got there.
I was going to mention that to Glenn later, but...
I accept a friendly.
The board is, you have to re-vote it.
We haven't voted yet.
We have voted, yeah.
So it's a friendly, and I accept it.
I accept, I accepted a friendly, and I accept it.
Okay, all right, so we're replacing the, the language with the, um, direct the manager.
Direct the manager, too.
Okay, yeah, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, in opposition, one, eight, it passes, thank you. And then you had this, um, item three, for all scenarios, how much information does council need on phase two?
We're getting to the easy stuff now.
So, um, let me just introduce this a little bit. As you recall, when we went through the first three scenarios, uh, the direction you gave us was phase one plus an all-new consolidated phase two. And those three scenarios, you'll get more information about that, but we're showing that it's technically feasible. So we then kind of made that assumption that you would want that same, uh, information as it relates to, uh, the E-Web site. But what you haven't said is kind of that conversation where I said spoiler alert, you know, is it really important, is it an important value, and how much more do you want us to continue to explore? You also want to explore the possibility of city services staying kind of where they are, or in some other format, or is it, um, how much, I think it's just really around, we're, we're unclear whether having a land bank, knowing that this is many, many years down the road, is enough, or do you want to have a real specific...
So currently, on all of these items, what we've been told is your, the phase, this sort of, um, amorphous phase two can be a, uh, in terms of the size that you've been looking at, can be accomplished in all of these scenarios, and is no more detailed than that. It's just possible with all of them, correct?
Yes. And, and at least for the first three scenarios, the relative cost for phase two is probably pretty close, because it's essentially the same-sized building, just in a different location. E-Web's a little bit different, as we've seen, just because you get sort of this phase one plus, so that adds a little bit more complexity into the E-Web conversation.
So possibly the, it's sort of a simplified version of phase two for the three, and then the slightly different, um, assumptions around... the slightly different assumptions around E-Web that you can look at, right? Is that what you're basically saying? Because you're wanting to distinguish if they're not the same, so you have to, you have to indicate something about that.
I think what we're trying to determine is really, how much do you have to have about phase two, which is this far distant piece, in order to make a phase one decision? So it's not really about, do you want to have a phase one and two? It's more, you know, we're trying to get you to a place where you can have kind of a preferred scenario or scenarios by the time you go on break, which is, which is close and we're, we're still trying to maintain that timeline. So it's, it's a question as to whether, how much time we should be spending on costing out multiple different brand-new variations of phase two? Or is it going to be a preferred scenario that we just say, you have a land bank? We're starting to just try to figure out, is that, you know, move forward with a city hall, you land bank.
Land bank really passed to the, the three.
Yeah, and it could.
Not a land bank, right? It's a, it's a building bank, I don't know.
On E-Web? You would still be land banking, you would still have to land bank for the additional 67,000 square feet if you really want to have all city services one stop right there.
Mike?
Thank you, Mary. I, I would, I would suggest that we need to do an accurate comparison, that information on phase two, because at least with the E-Web op, and that's E-Web option, that's where some of the most significant savings occur. That's what makes the comparison, the smarter comparison, because of the amount of money that gets saved in the phase two area. And I think personally that it's beyond that because of the amount of money we're talking about for a phase two on any of the first three options. I think if we're saying, well, we'll, we'll figure that out later, again, we're as good as saying, we're not going to build it. Because that's a significant number and I don't think we've had any real serious discussion yet about how the city would afford that. I think that's a very large number based on what we already know. So for me, we, I, I will absolutely want to see us talk about phase two in as much detail as we can, you know, meaningfully do, because it's what makes the comparison so much more germane to the conversation about the value of E-Web. And I think it frankly provides us a path to phase two. Because let's say, just hypothetically, just hypothetically, if the cost of phase two on a square footage basis is anywhere near what phase one of the previous plan was, one was 28 to 32,000 square feet, so that means in phase two with the previous plan, we'd need 100,000 square feet. So we're talking about if one was close to $1,000 a square foot, we'd need almost $100 million to build phase two with the previous planning. Now, I, I honestly don't believe that'll ever happen in this city, that we'll build a phase two city hall for $100 million. So that's the critical part I think we need to discuss, because it's the only way I think we get to a meaningful phase two.
Allen?
When I first got on council 10 years ago, we were in the midst of a conversation about a consolidated city hall process. We'd just gone through like a couple of years of doing that, did the little clicker things and everything. And, and it ended up being, not having very much support, nowhere near majority when we polled it, and was way too expensive. It was like $120 million. And so it died, which is actually why we're talking about a small city hall now, which is a much smaller city hall, because that, that plan didn't make much sense. And I, I agree with Mike, it was never going to be possible. So that, that's, I always keep thinking about that, so that, and I think of that when I think of how important phase two is. All of the options, including E-Web, have phase two as possible, so none of them have obstructions to doing that. So then they're all kind of equal in that regard. Then I think about that old city hall process and the fact that us building a new, a phase two may never happen, especially when I think of, we're going to, the county is going to put out a bond for maybe 50 to 60 million dollars for half the price of the courthouse and we got a parks bond that might be coming up. And I think we're going to run out of appetite for building stuff, for, for, for getting money out of the folks. So that makes it longer to have phase two be out there. And then I, I guess when I think of any of the phase two in terms of the costs, what we've said all along is all of the costs are the same, remodel or build. So if we're trying to get the same exact number of square feet, all the costs are going to be basically the same except for the other things that make it different. And so, so all of that put together makes phase two important to have in the context, but it's not real important to me in terms of where we go in the short term for phase one. So I, I think it's, you know, on a scale of one to 10, it's kind of like a two. It's not, it's important that we vision it, but I don't know that we need to have it direct what we're doing in terms of our short-term decision about a new city hall location.
George Polling?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Mike's comments about looking at the cost of a phase, phase two at E-Web. I'm a little hesitant though to start talking about phase two costs at this point because we don't know. I mean, sure, I, I'm sure the, the engineers and the planners and everybody have a way to try to project out what the costs are going to be 10 years or 15 years down the road, but we really don't know. It'll probably be significantly more per square foot than we're paying right now. But, you know, I think that's an important piece of information to get, to further our discussion. And the, the talk about consolidation, in reference to what Allen was talking about, we were presented a Taj Mahal-type facility and it included, at that time it included police services as well as consolidating all of, all of the other services that the city offers. And I think that was kind of one of the reasons why it didn't go anywhere, not so much the cost, but, you know, with the, the police department moving out to Country Club, I, I think that reduces our, our cost. The discussions we've always had, we've, I've always heard, you know, it would be nice if we could do a one-stop city hall for services. So I, I think the consolidation effort is still there. My biggest concern, or what I'm looking for is, on all these scenarios, and you've kind of already pointed it out, is where, where and will phase two fit in for all the different scenarios? How many square feet we're going to need to consolidate all the services? And just kind of a ballpark cost of building phase two is important, but I don't think at this point it's as necessary to have that to keep our current conversation moving. I, I don't mean to say I don't care about the cost. Yes, I cared about the cost, but I think at this point, we need to stay focused on phase one more.
Greg and then Claire.
You know, I'm going to ask this question again because I've asked it before. And that is, you know, really, at the end of the day, how are we going to pay for all of this? We, when I came on council four years ago, the price tag was $15 million. Then we went up to 17 million. And then a few months ago, we were in the 25 to 28 million dollar range. And we had identified, you know, certain pieces of the budget that we were going to pull money from, both the CIP as well as, you know, the general fund, where we were going to piece some of this together to be able to pay for it. And, you know, if, if we are going to look at those revenues, plus the possibility of maybe a bond or some other kind of other funding mechanism, if we have to go to the voters for a city hall, dead in the water. They won't buy it, guarantee it. I think that we need to be really clear in the information that I need to help make me a decision on phase one, even out in the future of phase two, is where the revenue's going to come from, how do we pay for it? And I think that, you know, I, I appreciate this conversation because I've lived here for over 30 years now. And in the 30 years, I know that we have, we have constantly as communities had conversations about revitalization of downtown, this downtown, that, open up the streets, keep them closed, what investments. And we've made some significant investments and some forward progress in revitalizing our downtown. But I want us to keep this in mind, there are other issues out there that we have to be cognizant of. And some of those issues involve, you know, other infrastructure needs in terms of pools, parks, other areas of the city that are underserved because we don't have the infrastructure there that we need to have. And that's what, you know, people talk to me about all the time. Fine, we like the idea of investing in downtown, but what about my neighborhood? Why, you know, we need to have a, a, you know, more libraries, more pools, more, you know, community centers? And we're not going to get there unless we have even more forward-looking conversations, discussions about how we look at the entire city in terms of our infrastructure. So, you know, I want to know how we're going to pay for it, where we're going to get the money, and then what are we not going to do or what are we going to delay and defer, you know, in order to get this done?
Claire?
So I tend to agree with Council Polling's perspective that, you know, we recognize the feasibility of the phase two locations. And I think trying to do any realistic costing at this point just seems unreal, doesn't seem realistic. But I appreciate Council, Councilor Clark's comment that if in fact, one of the options means it makes phase two more affordable, I think that needs to be taken into account in the analysis, because otherwise we're ignoring an important piece of information. And that would hold true for any of the scenarios. So just like we want to take into account the potential value of the sale of a piece of property, should we switch with the county or not put the city hall where we've currently designated it? You know, I would want that taken into account, but I'm not going to be looking for any kind of detailed costing on any of the phase two scenarios that we've put forward.
So what did you hear?
Thank you. I, I agree with what Claire said. I think a conversation about phase two should inform us but not drive us, because we'd have too many unanswered questions about what phase two would be. We may change our mind about how big it should be or what it should involve or where, you know, there's a number of considerations about phase two. So what we can think about now in phase two to inform us would be helpful, but I'm not going to be governed by the phase two conversation. And partly that's driven by, I'm glad those that were here talked about the previous city hall process, because it was very clear in that process that whatever we came up with was just a pipe dream and was impossible to build. That, you're right, if we went out for a bond to build a city hall, it was dead on arrival. And that did lead to the decision that we would pay for, for the city hall process in phases and with money that we saved ourselves. That's what the facility reserve was set up to do. And it got $27 million in it at one point. And part of that money we used to pay for the new police headquarters and the 15 million that we have now is in part from that money. So it was kind of our commitment that if we wanted to have a city hall, we were going to have to figure out a way to pay for it ourselves and that phasing and saving the money was the way to do it. And that's how we have arrived at today. So I think phasing is still the only way we're going to get a city hall. And I think focusing on phase one is the only way to have this conversation about city hall have any legs and keep moving forward, whether it's in any of those scenarios, and that includes E-Web. But it's got to be primarily a phase one conversation because it, there ain't going to be any other conversation if we don't focus on that element and what we can come up to, with the money to pay for it. I agree. Right now, if we really wanted to, if we had the will to do it, we've got in the neighborhood of $36 million that we could spend on phase one of city hall, plus other monies that we could come up with. We could use the money to build other things, but if you build a pool, you got to have the ongoing money to run it. If you build a community center, you got to have the ongoing money to run it. And I'm willing to have the conversation only if you also talk about how you run it, because that was the library conversation we had just two or three years ago, was how are we going to pay to keep running those things? So I don't want to get in that conversation, I want to focus on city hall. And right now, our city hall commitment, as far as I'm concerned from 2005, our commitment was, the only way we can do it is to do it in phases and the only way we can do it is if we come up with the money ourselves. And I still think those two commitments are still valid, because we can't bond the money to build it and we can't build it all at once. So to me, that's, that's why I want to be informed about phase two, but not driven by phase two. Because I'll, we'll get to phase two, if we have the land bank for it, that's the most important consideration. But I'll talk about phase two, i, i, once we have more information about what phase two is even going to look like.
Mike?
I would only say, I have heard several of my colleagues now speaking in a fashion that leads me to think that they may not have any idea how or if we should have a phase two. I would suggest that without at least the discussion about very broad cost estimates, very broad, and at least strategy elements to get there. If we don't have some manner of plan, if we can't compare the real savings one would get at a pre-existing set of square foot of E-Web versus how we pay for something brand-new that is considerably larger, then it's, it would be my prediction that phase two just never happens. And there's no realistic plan to do it. So then we have to have the question, or the, the, the conversation about what it costs us never to have a phase two. And to add that to the cost of not purchasing square footage to house that space. Thank you.
So I need to wrap this up. I would just simply say that there was a time, maybe 40 years worth of time, when people said we would never get downtown back. And what it took was a determination to keep moving even when you hit bumps along the way. And that's the kind of determination I think this will take or any other good project you want to do will take. Nothing seems to come that easily. And in the context of city hall conversation, you won't probably get to hear me talk about it, well, maybe you'll get to hear me say it a few more times before I'm done. But from, from my point of view, this is not about a building for city council. This is really about the people's place. It's where the policy and major decisions of our community get made and where our whole community is invited in to participate in that conversation. So when we, we make it small by talking, sometimes the way we talk about it. We make it small in terms of its size, we make it small in terms of its importance. But I think it is profoundly important to a city where we regularly get over 100 people coming into a council meeting, because everybody feels that our city council is a place where they can really discuss the important things of our city and express the views that they feel strongly about. And I just feel like I just want to bring that back every time we have this discussion because I think it is, it, it is really important not to me or you, it is important to the whole city. And I, and it's worth, it's worth its struggle. So with that, are you?
Yeah, so what I, what I would take from this, and I would suggest not a vote on this, because I'm not sure how you would vote, not how you'd vote, but how we craft a motion. Chris, you said informed but not driven by phase two. So it feels like what we will, what we will try to do is provide the information that informs your decision. So the, the one that's most challenging a little bit is how we incorporate all of this into that E-Web conversation, because that's a little bit different sort of a scenario. And so we will do our best to ensure that you're, you have all the information you need on the scenarios with phase two without over-analyzing phase two. I'm not exactly sure what that looks like yet, but we'll work on, I think we get the intent of what you're looking for and we'll just try to figure out how to work that in. And if. it right, then we can come back on the twelfth or on the fourteenth to kind of take another round at it so we can, there's a little bit of time for that.
It feels like there's costs of many kinds that need to be taken into consideration.
Right, there's several moving pieces.
Yeah.
And our intent will try to.
Better track three-dimensional check.
Yeah, try to present it in a way that you can tease out what you need to tease out.
Well, yeah, speaking of costs, I think this, we were provided this information at one time, but I was searching through my papers and couldn't find it. How much we're paying for rental space?
We have that. We will have that.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see that again. I think you provided, but it was a long time ago.
We're working on updating that.
Papers got shuffled and I couldn't find it. Yeah, there's so many moving pieces here, it's brain-numbing sometimes if you.
You've got to keep stepping along.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, no, it's not impossible. It's complicated.
Don't click it just quite yet. No, you want to. No, you really, really want to because you have so much energy. As you recall, before you click out, one of the things I just wanted to bring up was the potential additions or postponements on your current tentative working agenda. So, we don't have anything on your agenda before you go on break to talk about any of the sort of time, place, manner restrictions that you might want to consider placing on recreational marijuana facilities. If you wanted to do that in a way that would go into effect before the first of the year, you would need to, Glenn will have to jump in here, but you would have to have kind of the work session, public hearing, and take action unanimously at a meeting before you go on break. So, that would be something that you would need to do probably either on Monday, November twenty-eighth or December twelfth. So, we wanted to just kind of get that out there so you're thinking about it. And then the second one is the South Willamette work session on the fourteenth that they've asked to postpone. So, we have a motion for that and I just wanted to put it out there that somebody might want to.
Do that one.
Put that forward tonight or.
If anybody wants to postpone it, does anybody have any objection to that?
Postponing South Willamette.
Yeah, that's a request from the neighborhood.
They've asked for that and so this would just postpone it to January. And that would allow for you to have another ninety-minute scenario selection.
Anybody okay? Okay, put it out there.
I move to replace the deadlines identified in the October tenth motion regarding next steps on South Willamette as follows. Staff proposal will be due January thirty-first, 2017, with a council work session scheduled to follow, ideally in February.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. Favor, none in opposition, that passes. Now, anybody have any feelings about it?
I do have one question in reference to marijuana. Is there a deadline that we absolutely have to have something in place if we want to put in distance restrictions or hours restrictions?
There's not a deadline when you have to put something in place, but there's a business that has contacted, I believe Claire and maybe Mike, I can't remember who they said, where apparently if there isn't something in place by January one, then they will not be able to operate until something does go into place. And so, if you want to do something, as Sarah was saying, the only way to do that, because we don't have, we can't follow the normal charter process of having you direct us to prepare an ordinance, posting that on the web for a certain period of time, then having a public hearing, the only way you can do that is if you unanimously agree that basically you're going to waive those parts of the charter that say you have to provide that kind of notice. And you can do that, but what we need you to do today is to, well, really two things. One is to direct us to actually prepare an ordinance. And the other is if one of you or more than one of you is not willing to agree to waive those charter requirements, then there's no reason to direct us to prepare that ordinance because when it comes time for you to adopt it, you don't have to all vote in favor of the ordinance, but you all have to agree to vote on the ordinance. And so, if one of you isn't going to be willing to do that, then don't direct us to prepare the ordinance and try to meet the January one deadline.
I didn't even know what we're talking about. What poll I have?
Okay, I've got Claire and then Mike and then George.
Yeah, so I apologize, I'm caught a little flat-footed. I don't have access to my email. But the situation is currently licensed medical marijuana dispensary that's now doing retail under the current rules will no longer be able to do that under the new rules because a looking glass facility has been designated as an educational center that's within a certain distance of their shop. We could pass an ordinance that would basically, I believe, either grandfather them in or provide the allowance that they could remain, given that they would meet certain criteria in terms of barriers between their shop and that facility, which is across River Road. And that would allow them to continue under OLCC rules that would be governing them starting January first. If we take no action, they will get out of the rules they're under now and be subject to the rules January first and they will have to close.
So, this would just be for that one place?
Well, it would apply citywide, but the request has come from that one place. It's the only location I know of in town that's having that particular situation unless another councillor's been contacted. But because of my being absent, you know, due to medical issues, I haven't been able to kind of work this question the way I had hoped. I'm not necessarily in favor of a bunch of time, place, and manner restrictions, but I do think this is a kind of critical one piece that we could consider. We have also gotten requests from shops to look at a thousand-foot distance between shops, which we don't currently have. And I think it would be of value for the council to have this discussion. January first is when the new rules go into effect and a lot of folks', you know, investment and time may be thrown into chaos if we don't take action before then.
And Chris, if you actually could, if you decided, you could say that this special ordinance actually does only apply to this single business if you wanted.
Okay.
And then you could deal with the broader question of other time, place, manner restrictions at another time if that's what you wanted to do.
Okay, I've got Mike and then George and then Alan.
I'm not exactly what, thank you, Mayor, I'm not exactly what you would call the city's biggest advocate for marijuana shops, but I would say that this is about equal access and equal application of the law. In one case, the law applies with the medical marijuana shops that if a shop exists before a school gets there and a school comes in, they're grandfathered. They're not within, they're not subject to that thousand-foot requirement because they were there first. But it's not the case with retail shops, don't I have that correct? And so, they now all have to go there and the law isn't written the way that covers them, the way that if they came in, I knew I was going to confuse that as I went.
You're right. And I think the clarification and what people have been talking about at the public hearing is, under the medical rules, there were distances from schools. There were also distances from shops. And when the recreational rules go into a place in January, they, the medical shops can sell recreationally and new recreational shops can locate without that same thousand-foot rule. And so, some cities and locations and what people have been asking you to do is put into place some time, place, manner restrictions that would continue to have those thousand-foot buffers. This one's a little bit different, but I think it's, they're both in the same.
To finish that, I can't explain it as clearly as our assistant city manager just did or that I would want to, but from my perspective, it was about equal application of the law. And so, I would like to move on that unless Claire wants to make that motion to follow through on the work she's already been doing and I'll second it.
Let's hear from George Brown and Alan and then we'll do, decide what you want to do.
Okay, let's go over this one more time. No, I'm just not quite clear on it. So, the new regulations take, go into effect January first. The school came second. The pot shop is already there, is that correct, the medical?
Correct.
All right. And is that for any medical facility gets to stay if a school, because it's probably going to happen again, there'll be some kind of educational entity will open up within a thousand feet of a marijuana, you know, outlet.
So, George, my understanding is this is a somewhat of a unique situation just because of the timing of when the new rules are going into effect. So, either somebody has a problem today or they'll, you know, if they open up in the next several weeks, then maybe they would have this same problem, or they're never going to have this problem because it's just the oddity of when the new rules go into effect and sort of how they, the medical marijuana rules and the recreational rules sort of dovetail off each other. And that's why I say if you wanted to, since you only have one business that has asked you for this exception, which basically says it's okay for a facility, if you decide there's a topographical or physical or geographical feature that separates the facility from the, quote, "school," then you can authorize them to be less than a thousand feet as long as they're more than five hundred feet. So, you won't have this issue next year because new rules will go into effect. This is just related to this one business.
Okay, but we could have the same situation, could pop up next year, the way I'm understanding it right now, in that if some other educational entity wanted to open up within a thousand feet of an existing marijuana dealer, would they have to close then, the people that are there because they're within a thousand feet of?
I don't think so. I'm not as familiar with those rules, but the exception, there, when the legislature changed some of the laws as they've been trying to tinker with them to deal with some of the unintended consequences, they added a provision that basically you can use now, but after January one, it becomes moot. And that provision is the one that says, okay, you can allow a business right now to basically, you know, you can say, because of those topographical, geographical features, it's okay for the business to remain operational even though it's less than a thousand feet from the, quote, "school."
The new retail has a grandfather clause. The old medical doesn't have a grandfather clause. So, they have to re-license and they can't.
George, are you finished?
Yes, thank you.
Alan.
So, does this school exist now or is it proposed?
It exists now. It's actually not a school. It's a, do you know, Claire, it's a looking glass.
It's not a school. It's looking glass what?
If I can answer?
Yes.
So, it's a looking glass facility that serves youth and the Oregon Health Authority or OLCC, whoever determines, looked at it and decided that it qualifies as an educational facility. It's not a traditional school.
One that's been there forever.
Oh, that's the looking glass thing. Is that Station Seven?
No.
It's one on River Road.
Downways.
Stepping stone.
And so, how close is it?
It's across the four lanes of River Road.
It's like a mile and a half if you're trying to get across.
It's more than five hundred feet, it's less than a thousand.
Yeah, the rules around this are changing all the time, but I guess after January one, though, the rules will be known and anybody moving around will know what the rules are and so you should know what the rules are. But in the interim, we've got some problems to deal with. I guess I don't necessarily have a problem with this one because it's so limited and such an odd case that if we could craft it so that it's very narrow, we can't actually say the name of the business, can we? And the school.
I believe that the city of Vinita, which did something similar, may have said it, but it will be crafted so it would only apply on River Road between certain addresses. It will be narrow enough that it won't apply to anybody else.
That works, that works.
Wouldn't it be, because there might be another facility out there that's not aware of the rule change. Can't we just craft it so it says any, exempt any establishment that was in place prior to a certain date is exempt?
Not under this provision because the only way you can authorize this facility is if you make a determination that the geographical or topographical or physical features actually provide basically an alternative to the thousand-foot separation. So, if you had school here, open field, same side of the street, the facility, I'd be telling you, there's no way you can legally make the determination that topographical or geographical features separate it. So, it's really difficult, especially in the time that we have, for me to try to craft what those characteristics would be. If there were others that came before you, you could say, oh, okay, well, let's take a look at a map and figure out whether something is similar and then add it at the time that you're approving the ordinance.
Am I hearing people objecting to going ahead and adding the thousand-foot rule for all facilities then?
I don't know yet.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to do that now.
That's not part of this conversation though, right? That's a different conversation.
Yeah, that can be a separate conversation and that you have time to do after the first of the year.
So, before Claire, I'd let her put a motion out or whatever she wants to do with this.
I believe Claire's motion would be, I move to direct the city manager to prepare an ordinance.
Will said.
Thank you. To bring back to council before council goes on break, that would exempt the business on River Road from the provisions related to the thousand-foot effort.
I just wanted, because your first question was, we don't want to do this if anybody's going to hold it up, so to speak, if we're not going to agree to let it move forward for a vote.
That would be my preference because I'd rather not spend the time drafting.
I'm looking around the room. Anybody?
Anybody object?
Okay, then, I think you're.
Yeah, so I appreciate the conversation and the concern about other businesses that might be caught unawares, but I think they've all been notified and I think this business was notified and that's why they reached out kind of in a panic. So, I'll try to remember what Glenn was saying.
Just say, move what Glenn said.
So moved, the city attorney.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition.
And just so you know that, Mayor, before you do that, just so you know, it will not be on the twenty-eighth, it will be on the.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Barry, you got anything else?
Nope.
Okay, then. There we go.